Good evening, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four at six thirty two P M. We have a quorum present for the zoning board of appeals. It's a hybrid uh meeting on Zoom and at the municipal offices. Certain meetings normally held at the municipal offices are being held remotely with adequate alternative means of public access where required. Public participation provided in accordance with House Bill number fifty eight of the hundred and ninety third general court, which extended the governor's March twelfth twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter thirty A, section twenty until March thirty first twenty twenty five. So now the meeting's called the order. We read the disclaimer on that. We have President in person.
Laura Pontani, President.
David Potter, President.
Adam Sokolowski, President.
Dave Sharp, President.
Excellent. All right, we have minutes to be approved from four eleven and four and five twenty two. Does anybody have any questions on those or do you wanna take action on them or wait till the end of the meeting?
I just want to point out in one section it says I was remote, but I wasn't remote. And I think David Sharp maybe was remote.
Okay.
When we had um.
Which minutes were those in?
This is. May twenty second.
David Potter, remote, but you were definitely here.
Yeah.
All right.
And David Sharp, I think you were remote.
Right.
Yeah, I think so.
But otherwise, no concerns.
Maybe it's a very minor concern and but but maybe could remove the E from my last name.
Oh, yeah.
Whoever's taking the minutes.
Okay.
Don't wanna sound picky, but just.
All right, I will send these minutes back for a correction that can be handled at the next meeting for the May twenty second meeting uh minutes. Cause there's the misspelling is is quite uh quite a few spots, Dave.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really just to the future I was thinking. I don't really care what it says.
Well.
At some point.
We just wanna make sure that we have them.
Yeah.
You know, good there. So I'll take a motion to continue the minutes to the next meeting.
Still moved.
Okay, seconded by David Potter. All those in favor?
David Potter, aye.
Laura Pontani, aye.
Dave Sharp, aye.
Okay. All right, uh, we have Hampshire Lumber here. I can see them in the audience, so I'm gonna um start um the new business on a variance. Sixteen Elm Street notices hereby given that the zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June twenty seventh twenty twenty four at six thirty P M on an application filed by Hampshire Deerfield LLC for a variance for the property located at sixteen Elm Street identified in the assessors record map. One sixty eight lots one twenty and one twenty one to allow for nonconforming setback on the southeast corner of a proposed new construction in the C I district as provided foreign zoning bylaws, chapter one seventy nine, section five two two two. The application documents available for review in the foyer of municipal offices online at W W W at Deerfield M A dot U S in the calendar event. Sure.
Hope somebody who's on Zoom, I saw Jeff's. He was on there for Berkshire Design can pull up.
Jeff Swire, yeah, I see him on there.
I am here, yes.
Would you mind sharing your screen with the plan because my computer seems to have frozen? Even though I had a computer, but my.
Uh, let me see what I have. That would help explain what's going on. Um, okay.
So while you're pulling that up, I'm Erica Riegees.
Okay, Eric, I hate to interrupt you. I'm sorry, but.
There we go.
The microphone technology here is you gotta be very close to it. And then so everybody can hear you. That's online. That's I appreciate it.
Apologies, no problem.
Okay.
Thanks for reminding me. So um while we pull up the plan, there it is. So my name is Erica Riegees. I'm the architect for this project. I'm here from Hampshire Lumber and I have Jeff also. That is, but anyway, Jeff Swire from Berkshire Design is also here. So we find ourselves before you tonight for a variance for a side yard setback of ten feet. Or I don't know if you're familiar with the history, but there was a land swap that was done with the town for the creation of the Leary lot, which created this situation that with the building footprint that we need for Ace Hardware and for the retail space that we want. Um, we we do need that full size. We can't cut it back and to jog at the corner also would not look very nice for our downtown street front. So we are asking for a variance on the setback, just on that tiny wedge that um you can see he's circling that on the here in the corner. It's a small amount. Um, so we can proceed with our our plan. Now, just for reference.
Yeah.
We're doing about a twelve thousand square foot footprint of a building and that is uh something that Ace Hardware asks for their retail stores. Our Orange store is also twelve thousand square feet. Our Brattleboro store and so is our Barry store. Our flagship store in Keene is uh much larger than that. But this is something that we're asking for because we we do need that retail space.
No, I I understand that I I just, you know, and I'm I understand that the hardship was now created, but I thought with the land swap, there was supposed to be the town was supposed to be given an easement.
I I can address that real quick, too, if you don't mind, Adam.
Go ahead. That's Bob Walden, building inspector, or is the town planner on? I thought he might be joining.
He he's also gonna um address it, but I just wanted to make a point of clarity at the the special permit hearing, the last hearing. I had believed that little wedge had swapped because David Sharp pointed out it was too close to the property line.
Right.
And it turned out that it didn't because it needed to go to town meeting. So the town so they don't have the setback and the town does not have the right away. So that's why we're back here.
Okay, now, is the town still gonna go through the process if we grant the variance tonight to do the easement?
I'm not one hundred percent sure. That's where I was hoping Chris would address it, but I wanna say that there may have been an issue with the easement and the grant to do the parking lot, so it's better not to.
Oh, because of the parking lot grant. All right. I mean, in general, I'm fully supportive of what needs to happen here tonight. I was just curious. I like I thought and I spoke at the meeting that and I I'm glad that Dave Sharp caught it that those that issue was worked out when we granted the special permit, but apparently.
Yes, I I thought so also.
No change to the design that was presented for the special permit. There's just a a now a legal hardship that that is created by the town. Um, that is uh that we can answer. So you have a significant hardship so that we could we can I see the hardship that we can grant the variance, but I was just curious on the um.
I might I might add about the easement. There's an easement agreement that's been signed between Hampshire and Deerfield that was part of the obtaining the federal grant that had to be agreed upon and official. So that's been done.
Okay.
Um, so there's used by the town during construction and by Hampshire of this area. Now, that's maybe not the same easement. I'm not sure. But that was that was been executed. That agreement has been executed. And that was for so the town could fulfill its obligations under the terms of the grant, the federal grant they received.
Yeah, okay. Um, has all of us reviewed the letter from the Board of Selectmen that was in our packet or does anybody need time to or or would like me to go through it? I
I'm all set.
I think I need to read it.
Okay, go ahead. And and just sorry to interrupt, but Chris Dunn has tuned in now if anybody has any questions.
What's going in behind the new building? Like what's if you walked out the back of that new building, what is that?
Back here?
Yeah. That's not part of the town parking lot, right? That's the parking lot.
No, this will be parking and access deliveries for for Hampshire.
Yeah.
Through through their existing, you know, access on Railroad Street.
Right.
And so, yeah, I mean, just that, and Chris, feel free to interrupt me, but just we've been involved in this project for a while. From from what I what I understand um and you know what what has transpired is the building was proposed in this location. There was originally a setback issue that that A and R plan had resolved um which swapped these two small triangles of property. So all of that would have been in compliance. Um, that never that A and R plan never got fully executed by the town, so there was an opportunity to correct that. And then what prompted it was the fact that the federal grant money that was available for the to fund the Leary lot um had had some had some weird clause that you couldn't, you know, use an easement or or anybody else's property. Uh, otherwise that grant money went away. And so the only way we could fund the town could fund the Leary lot is to is to go back to the original um property line configuration for the purposes of the Leary lot construction. And and Chris, I don't know, you know, you could certainly speak to whether it can that A and R could be, you know, executed in the future to bring everything into compliance. Once that grant money is, you know, realized, but um, you know, it's really was the sole function is to is to get that that federal funding um for that project.
Yeah, and I I would I would kind of clarify that the 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 grant funding and the process we had to go through with the Federal Highway Administration just kind of ended up alerting us to the fact that the A and R hadn't been properly executed. Um, so just just to clarify that point. So I think, you know, I'll back up for a second and just say, you know, obviously, the town has been working very closely with Hampshire to advance this project for years. Uh, and we're kind of at the, you know, uh, the final hurdle here. Um, so, you know, as it spelled out in that letter of support from the select board, you know, a variance has to hinge on the shape of the lot. And while the shape of the lot that um, you know, was created through the land swap with Hampshire is not in any way unusual, um, the existing, the lot with the existing Hampshire building on it certainly is. And it's because of that, the way it intersects Elm Street and Railroad Street intersect, um, they don't intersect at a regular ninety degree angle. Um, and so that kind of forces any architect to make a choice about how to configure your building. Um, and this case, um, you know, Hampshire had configured it so that it was sort of lined up with the existing building, um, which means that it's sort of not fully frontally facing Elm Street. Um, and that's so as a result of that, there is that little piece of the corner of the building that's over the um, the property line or not, excuse me, not over the property line, but over the setback line on the side with the town driveway. So so that's kind of the um. Yeah, exactly. Um, that's kind of the the reasoning for, you know, why seeking a variance might make sense here. Obviously, the town, as Jeff alluded to, tried to go another direction and um, you know, something fell through the cracks there and we didn't get that solution fully implemented. Um, so now we're seeking relief through the zoning board of appeals. Um, you know, one thing I would also just echo from that letter. You know, the purpose of these setbacks isn't spelled out in our zoning bylaws. Often they're for emergency personnel access to a site. Um, they also are for, you know, ensuring that sunlight and airflow can reach neighbors' properties unobstructed. In this case, the neighboring property is the town driveway. Um, so we're not too worried about access because, well, there's a driveway and we're also not too worried about airflow or sunlight because it's a driveway. Um, so it definitely doesn't um derogate from the purpose of the bylaw to have uh, you know, this building slightly within that setback. Um, and then lastly, I would just note uh again from the letter. Um, this is a, you know, kind of an unusual, at least the the existing Hampshire parcel is an unusual shape. And so I don't think there's too much concern about, you know, this setting any kind of precedent. This really does have to hang on that unusual shape of that parcel. Um, so this isn't something that's going to result in um, you know, other property owners seeking a variance under similar circumstances.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Mr. Dunn. And I appreciate that. I I think that this is a clear hardship created by the butter who's was, you know what I mean, and is okay with it. So there's no objection. From my point of view, um, and if any other members of the board have any questions or there's any public comment, we can continue.
I I got a quick question. Um, can you go back to the not this slide that you got up, but the other one that shows the two buildings? And and I get that we're about to put shovels on the ground and so I'm this is more of a curiosity from the design perspective. But it just looks like, I guess I'm curious why they they really went for that twenty foot setback from Elm Street, but that whole building looks like you could just move it to be flush with the existing building. Uh, and you'd almost get rid of that um that you would have gotten you get closer to the ten feet and you would have a little more space at the front and you'd be more flush with the other building. So I don't want to spend a lot of time. I'm just curious from the design folks why why it didn't just set back more if there's nothing behind it. Do you know what I'm saying? You just slide that block like you're playing with blocks, like you just slide that proposed building on top of the existing building in that picture. And if you look at our handouts for our meeting tonight, there's another picture, too, that makes it just look like if you just pushed it, you know, you're gonna push it away from the uh that driveway in. I'm not suggesting you do that. I'm just curious from a design perspective, why we pushing it so far to the Elm Street as opposed to a little bit more setback, if anybody can answer it.
All right, I'll let I'll let Eric certainly speak to the architecture component, but at least from a site standpoint, I would say it was it was a lot driven by um dimensionally what we had available and understanding that we wanted to, you know, try to maximize this space in the back and provide as much, you know, offsite parking or onsite parking as as possible. There's, you know, this this dimension between the sidewalk and the existing property line was, you know, to make a double loaded um, you know, parking lot was the difference of, you know, a few feet. So that was part of it. And, you know, similarly with the front, just trying to, you know, provide access for, you know, accessible parking and a turnout and all of that. So you know, you're 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 moving these, you know, it's like Tetris, moving these rectangles around with certain dimensions that um, you know, we we could have ended up with seven spaces, but we got sixteen. And so that seemed like a uh, you know, a benefit to to the project. So that somewhat, you know, was was part of the decision making process. But I can't speak to the architecture. I'll let um, yeah, Eric can speak to that. But um, from a site standpoint, that's that's part of the rationale.
I might also just mention, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of things. The um also in the back, uh, there's stormwater drainage happening subsurfaceally back there, and that's all permeable pavement. So I think it's also important to have that area as a catchment area in that back back of the building there. You can see that. And if we start to encroach on that, then now you have cars blocking. You have I mean, I think it's good to keep that open like that. That's just my personal opinion. But architecturally, more important, we're really trying to integrate this into the downtown streetscape. And actually, all the buildings beyond are set even forward closer to the street. And that whole architectural, um, all the facades of downtown have a certain aesthetic and a vocabulary. And this this is kind of a gateway. You you cross the railroad tracks and you're really into downtown. You see it from Route five ten. So we really want to integrate the building into that streetscape and pushing it further back would kind of void that. Because it was never downtown streetscape. You don't have parking pulling up right to the front. You have the the building almost zero lot line, zero setback um from the lot line. So this is kind of a basically a halfway compromise of that. But really, the point is to to integrate into the um into the design of downtown, the existing, excuse me, into the existing um design of downtown. What I call downtown town center.
Thank you.
This historic town center. Thank you. I don't I don't know why my computer's not working. I apologize. Otherwise, I would show you the elevations and how the whole the whole study we showed to the um at the planning board explaining that.
Yeah, when we did the special permit, we had quite some more information that was given to us as well. So.
Yep. No, that was great. Thank you.
Pat, any members of the public uh ask any questions for the public hearing? We have one person here in the audience. Ma'am, uh, we have a public hearing going for Hampshire Lumber. Um, would you like to speak to that? Mm hmm. Oh, man, I'm sorry. If I I'm sorry to interrupt, but uh, if you could use the microphone next to you or one of the microphones up here. I'm sorry. I I forget that we have people in other places, so. Yeah. Either way, yeah.
Should I repeat everything?
You can just state your name. It just if you use the microphone close. Yeah, they're close talking microphones.
I wanted to kind of melt into the background.
Right. You you don't need to speak. I just if you'd like to have a public hearing, you're welcome to.
I I'm wondering that schematic that I saw there would uh we could would I have access to it to bring home and look at because I wanna know what this is on what side? Is it near my building? How would it impact me?
So you're at ten and twelve?
Ten and twelve Elm.
Right. So you're gonna be impacted more by the parking lot development?
Yes.
Than than this project. Um, either way, if you go on the town website, there's a lot of information about the parking lot design. And there's a lot of information. You can click on this full meeting packet like what they're showing up there or the previous meeting packets for the zoning board and you can see those online. Um, if you want some hard copies, you can stop in and see the uh building inspectors office. Amy.
Good.
She can provide those to you.
Thank you. I would appreciate that because I do like hard copies to take a look at and and kind of mull over. And I did speak with people about the parking lot in back and they were very very, very kind.
Yes.
Okay, I guess I don't have to be here then, maybe.
No, they just as in a butter, they notify you, but you're not required to be here or required to speak.
I was just, right. I was just.
We just wanna make sure that if anybody does, they have the opportunity.
Right.
So.
I you know, uh, I was just worried how it would impact the building and the tenants.
Right.
Because I try to work with them and the town, you know, as much as possible, but make sure everybody's happy.
We're trying, right? I think the parking lot project will hopefully add some more parking, so.
Right.
Will be good.
Okay. All right. So you're not plowing my building down or anything like that?
Absolutely not. No, I think.
Thank you so much.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Okay. Uh, motion to close the public hearing and seconded our motion by David Potter to close the public hearing. And I'll take a second on that.
Second that.
Second by David Sharp. And I'll be I'm I'm in favor of that. Adam?
Lauren Pontani, I'm in favor.
David Potter, aye.
Dave Sharp, would you like to vote on that?
I'm sorry if I was missing this. About uh twelve baby turkeys just walked in front of my window. So I got excited. I had to tell the house. Uh, Dave Sharp, aye, sorry.
Okay, so now that the public hearing is closed, um, does any board members have any discussion or questions? I don't see any. Um, I'd make a motion that the applicant has um met the requirements of a hardship. Um, and that I would issue that the board uh zoning board of appeals should issue a variance um based on the application and the information presented in the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, that was seconded by David Potter. Any further discussion? No. Okay, all those in favor? I'll start on the computer. Dave Sharp?
Dave Sharp, aye.
Dave Sharp in favor?
David Potter, uh, aye.
Yes, okay.
Laura Pontani, aye.
Adam Sokolowski, aye. So your variance is approved and thank you for coming in and we wish you the best and Amy will be in touch with you on the procedural end. Thank you. All right. Pat, any communication from the other uh thing on the menu uh tonight here? The uh variance for Yankee Candle? I don't see anybody here from them.
Really? Uh, I haven't heard from anybody.
Okay, I'll just check my email quick.
Bob, you didn't hear from anybody?
No, not that I'm aware of. No calls or anything. Amy didn't say anything.
And you checked all the messages that were on Amy's phone?
Yeah, Amy also forwarded to me the messages and I was talking to her today. So I I'm I'm assuming I would have heard something if there was something to hear. So.
Okay.
I guess the question is, do we open the public hearing and then continue it? I would think uh with no one present and then skip over it, then it would have to be reposted.
Huh. Maybe they were confused about the date and time or something. I don't know.
I could try quickly texting Amy and see if just double checking. I don't. She's on vacation, but she may answer.
She's moderating Concom and I've been in touch with her. No, she's available. I've already talked to her.
I'll send her a quick text. I haven't run it run into this before where no one's, so I just don't know the best way to to handle it for them. I don't.
I think you're right, Adam, that you have to open it and then continue it and close it. That's my guess.
Yeah, I think that's the best thing to do. I think that not opening it would guarantee that they would have to re refile and then repost in the newspaper.
Right.
I'll send her the text. I'll just see if she, you know, if she gets right back or not.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and open it, Bob.
Yep.
I'm gonna make a motion, open uh item number two, special permit variance twenty five Greenfield Road. Um, zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, twenty seventh, six thirty P M to consider a special permit and variance application filed by Yankee Candle Company for additional sign for a total area exceeding thirty two square feet and a property located at twenty five Greenfield Road. Map one seventy five lot four pursuant to zoning by law, chapter one seventy nine, three, two, 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 and five, two, two, two. The application documents are on file with public review at municipal offices during office hours on the town's website. W W W dot Deerfield M A dot U S in the calendar event.
I second that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Looking at me to say something?
No, I think we're good. Uh.
Yeah, I'm not. She's not getting right back to me.
The public hearing um for the uh special permit at uh twenty five Greenfield Road. There's no one here from the applicant. Uh, we can check with any members online. There's nobody else in the building. And then I think um what we can do is take a vote to continue it to our next meeting. So the public hearings remains open. take a vote to continue it to our next meeting. So the public hearings remains open. Then that way they don't have to refile with the newspaper.
Yeah, she might be busy with the other meetings, so she, she's not answering me. But like I said, I, I didn't get any communication from them.
Yeah.
Presumably the temporary sort of permission that's been given for those two signs they put up will just continue without any need for us to do anything? What, wasn't there some kind of temporary thing we did?
Right. That, that's why they're supposed to come back because we gave it to them for the.
Right. You know, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just.
What was the date? Do you remember? Was it to the?
The original?
Like the, till they had to come back. I'm just thinking.
Date of September 1st.
Okay. So there's still plenty of time.
I, I thought that's what we did and told them to come back in June. Minutes, yeah. Or that was back in March.
Or did we say just come to this meeting?
No. No, he refiled. This is, uh,
Yeah, I, I mean, I saw him in the office and he came in.
To this meeting as they were required to.
Right.
Um, cause it's a new application with a signature and a date of six, six.
Yeah, he, he was there just a couple of weeks ago. Uh,
He either forgot or something happened.
I think he just plain forgot. Yeah.
It says, you know, we're asking to renew and make permanent the special permit for the variance. Permit and variance for additional signage on the lot. The signage is part of a larger advertising effort, special ongoing new brand taking place.
You can't approve it without him being there, right?
Oh, I'm not. No, we have to see, because I have questions. I mean, it seems like it's the same.
It could, Amy texted back that she had not heard from him. But because she's been juggling so much, it could be her bad and she forgot to notify him of the exact date. So it could be, it could be something out of the town.
Well, we have a public hearing opened.
Right.
So we can, uh, make a motion to continue it to our next regularly scheduled meeting. And as long as it happens, I think in that, we can keep a public hearing open for 90 days. So.
Yeah, she's, she said she would have thought they would have known, but you know, I guess they could have forgot or could have, you know, could have been something.
Gorgeous evening.
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled ZBA meeting.
I'll second that. Whoop, go ahead.
Second by David Sharp. All those in favor?
David Potter, yes.
Laura Pontani, yes.
Adam, yes.
Dave Sharp, yes. Can I just ask a little question about this?
Yeah.
I just maybe for next time and maybe this is for Bob too. Um, you know, the, the special permit of the variance was for these larger signs. I get, I get that. Um, but when I went and read the sign part of our bylaws, it talks about two signs. And when I drive by there, they've got, they got a bunch of signs up. They've got the two big ones on the building and then they have these other two, um, you know, they're much sort of longer. Sorry, not much longer. They're smaller and rectangular now. There's one just as you turn in and then there's one somewhere else in that parking lot. Is, I don't want to be picky or anything, but is that something that should be, um, dealt with?
I don't know if they're more directional signs. I'd have to read through and look at it from that point of view.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know if they qualifies directional. I think directional is more if you're somewhere else directing you to there as opposed to directing you across a parking lot. Um, but I, I, I thought about that too, but I just wondered because the, they've been up for a while and, um, again, the whole thing about precedence and other people wanting to put up a bunch of signs and um, they've certainly had a bunch of signs there for a while.
I would be curious to, to know, um, the date of the updated sign bylaw and then when some of those signs were, where they put up, if they were put up prior to that.
Yeah, I'd have to really think about, I'd have to give it some thought too.
Uh, when was the bylaw updated? Sorry to interrupt.
I, I don't know off the top of my head, Dave. That would be, that would be, because the, you know, if you look at the original Yankee Candle signs, that would be, you know, 40 years ago.
No, these are all the very temporary signs, just about the, um, I'm sorry, what's it called? It all those new, new brand things that they're trying to sell from the, what I thought of as the health center, health club.
Okay.
So they're not Yankee Candle signs. They're, they're all related to this.
The outlet.
The outlet. Yeah. They're the exact same sign. They're just smaller and in the, in the entryway and in the parking lot somewhere.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll give it some thought before the next hearing. So we could address it if, you know, then
Yeah.
to, like, maybe they should remove the smaller signs if they're going to get approved, you know, the final approval for the larger signs or something to that effect.
I, I, I think that's what I was probably getting at is that they were probably there and then they put these big ones up. And so now we've got four signs instead of two.
Yeah, you know, I agree. And the other thing, you know, I, there's, was a complaint that was forwarded to the building inspector by myself about another sign in town. Um, out at the end of a driveway and it's something that Amy and I have talked about putting on the planning board's radar about an upgraded s- uh, sign bylaw.
Yeah, it's also, it would be nice because it is kind of convoluted in certain areas.
Which, you know, we give the permits, but the, it's the task of the planning board to change the bylaws regarding this stuff. Um, so it's, you know, and I, there's all the gas station in Old Deerfield. I mean, I think there's, you know, the town's done some things with special overlay districts. And I think that a historic overlay district in Old Deerfield, you know, with some stricter regulations on signage and stuff like that would be a good thing for the town to help support historic Deerfield. Um, in that area. And, you know, there's things in historic Deerfield that are, you know, I would, that become unsightly. Um, and, you know, they might, it might benefit them to be thought of in a sign by law. Especially with those temporary signs that.
Yeah, that's where I'd like a clear definition, like a banner versus a temporary sign and a real sign. And like, those things pop up all over the place. I mean, not just Deerfield, they're everywhere. Yeah. I mean, I kind of get it. It's like quick, cheap, you know, temporary advertising, but then they stay up all the time.
Yeah. Yeah. It's like one thing, if you're having your grand opening for a week, but you know, other than that, you know, I'm not really a huge fan of the temporary signage. All right. That's all I have on that. Um, I know, uh, a member asked for, and we were provided a bunch of older decisions and I want to make sure that people got those. And if they thought they were helpful or or not, Amy put a lot of work into that. I think she, yeah, she did put it on here for number six. Um, so it's on the agenda.
It was just on as a discussion item. She didn't add the actual email stuff.
I see. Yeah. I think what I was, uh, concerned about was we have talked about the parameters, you know, conditions that we've put on certain special permits. Um, and if that is, um, available just as a, you know, guideline, um, uh, and for us to be able to kind of maintain a standard. Um, because I know in meetings we cannot, we kind of recollect, but we don't exactly have it in front of us.
Oh, right. Yes. Okay. Yep. I see what you mean. Like, yeah, and we talked about that before, standard ones that everybody, and then, you know, you can get as long as the applicant agrees, you know, you can get as creative as the applicant, you know, on some of those conditions. But yeah, I see what you mean. I'm like some of the like standard ones that we go each time that we normally ask for.
The, the issue at that time was the, the Airbnb and that we had given maybe some set of conditions that were slightly different to different people and
Yeah.
um, uh, you know, just for us to be able to have as a committee, um, those decisions. I mean, I guess it's now our norm to mix, um, conditions.
It, it is. I mean, I think there's a lot of stuff that, you know, and Bob can speak to this because he, and actually if you ever stop by Chris Dunn, the town planner is a pretty good resource on stuff because he's seen stuff in different communities where, um, they have either a template like that or they are, their bylaws are a little bit more clearer on what you can and can't do in some certain areas and other places are even less clear. So the, there's also a lot of legislation as Bob and I are talking about that is in the pipeline and you don't know with legislation that will allow a lot of stuff in communities more by right and less by going through special permitting processes.
Yeah. If the ADU thing goes through the legislation, that's like no more single family zoning in Massachusetts.
Yeah, no, I think really what I'm looking for is, is if there's a, um, a way to compile, um, kind of a, a summary or cheat sheet of our decisions, um, who we've, you know, I mean, who, who keeps track of this? You know, is there historical, you know, because as part of our, um, uh, work as a board? I think it's good for us to see these parameters, you know, maybe, maybe it's work that can be done outside of the committee where, you know, some, somebody needs, can work with, uh, administrative assistants and, you know, clerical people that, that, that take care of, um, uh, you know, keeping the documentation so that we could have something that's, that's beneficial towards, um, keeping track of, um, these parameters. Cause when we're in the meeting, it's hard to, to, you know, remember all of these good ideas as far as conditions go and, and to be, to be kind of somewhat uniform or at least to recognize what has been somewhat standard.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know, uh, what's going to happen here if I'm reappointed or not. So, um, that'll be an issue for next meeting, but I'd be more than happy to ask Amy to, um, try to come up with something and to be, if, you know, make sure that the next meeting is a time that she's available and that's on the agenda. So board members can talk to her directly or she can present something, um, you know, that would be a, a helpful guide. And, and then that way, you know, the ball's moving in the right direction.
Mm-hmm. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Anything else, sir? I'm happy to adjourn.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me?
All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:16.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Second by Laura.
David Potter, aye.
Dave Sharp, aye.
Adam Sekulowski, aye.
Laura Pontani, aye.
All right. Thank you. Everybody have a great night.
Great. Thank you all. Bye bye.
Good night.